Welcome. This is, uh, we are live on Facebook and this is Representative Marshall, Representative Hornman, and myself, Senator Cook, from District 30. And we're just excited to be with you. We're starting a little bit early only because we wanted people to be able to join us. And we're still getting some of our technical stuff done here. So you can listen in, but we don't have a lot to say yet until right at 5:30. But also feel free to give us some questions. We'll try and take some of those questions live and answer those and see what happens.
Good. Looking forward to visiting.
So call your neighbors, your friends, bring the dog in, and uh, we'll start watching. Uh, hopefully we'll give you some interesting information of what's going on back here in Boise. So that's where we're at. We're in, I'm not sure what this room is called, but we're over on the east wing.
We're in the house side, uh, in a caucus room, the majority caucus area here. There's a room set up where they have the equipment for us to do these live town halls. And so the House Majority Caucus has provided the room. The Senate Majority Caucus has provided some technical staff here for us. So we've got Garen and Kayla who are helping us run the equipment in the background. So we'll see how this inaugural one goes and hopefully be able to do it more in the future.
We'd love to do this maybe every two weeks just so that you guys know what's going on and hopefully we can tell what you guys want as well. So uh.
This will be fun.
You tell themselves that.
Learn something new every day.
We'll learn from the experience, but we're excited to have the opportunity to speak with folks back home. We might just remind everyone that District 30, sometimes people don't understand where it is, but District 30 actually surrounds the city of Idaho Falls. So we have Ammon and south of Idaho Falls, south of Sunnyside, and, and north of kind of Lincoln Road and the west side of Idaho Falls. So our legislative district surrounds Idaho Falls, takes in most of the rural part of Bonneville County. Anyway, we're excited to be here, excited to be with you. Send in your questions. We'll be glad to answer them if we can.
So we're not, we're not going to really start until right at 5:30. So we got a few more minutes. So uh, we're just going to stare at you for a few minutes.
If we can see any questions coming in, in our comments, uh, we'll take a stab at those.
I'll let you guys be the question monitors.
How are we coming up yet?
We got a few more minutes. I'll, I'll tell you, maybe just filling in as a freshman, uh, these guys are veterans. They know what they're doing. As a freshman, I'm just, I guess the biggest thing that was surprising is how helpful people are. Even across the aisle, everybody here in their own way is trying to make, do, do their very, very best to make the state better. We might not agree with, you know, some of their ways they do things, but I just cannot believe how helpful people are, nor can I believe how busy everyone is. And there's just a lot of learning that goes on. There's, there's quite a learning curve, but it's good fun.
It really takes a tremendous personal commitment to serve. And so everybody here, Republican and Democrat, shares that fire in their heart that makes us basically step away from our lives, especially when we come from, we have to move away from Idaho Falls during the week, go home on weekends, um, sometimes, sometimes stick around here. But that's a tremendous personal commitment and everyone here shares that. And so we, we have that in common regardless of where we land on different policy issues.
So since we'll be talking just a little bit about some general things, I would just say, um, the business of the legislature over here is a bit messy sometimes. Bills are proposed and sometimes the news media reports on those bills or those ideas as if we're all in the midst of it already and that we're all supportive of it. The truth is that things get proposed and many of us have serious questions about whether those things are right to pursue. And so there's a lot of give and take and we have committee action and lots of things that, that take place. But the arguments and the things that we, we, we kind of wrestle with here, it's just part of what we do in the legislating body of a constitutional republic. So sometimes, you know, we'll get 200 emails on a particular issue in 24 hours and we try to respond to many of those. Some cases we can't respond to them, but we would hope that you would all understand there are extremely good people here, honest people, trying to do the very best they can. And the business of legislation is a bit messy anyway.
And it's by design. We're sitting here with a man who wrote a book on the Constitution. If you haven't read it yet, it's on Amazon. I would recommend that you find it in the tradition of the founders.
In the tradition of the founding.
And in the tradition of the founding. I have started this time because it has been such a challenge. There are, there are a lot of, um, questions about the balance of powers. And I've started reading a few pages from that book every night to remind myself, this is by design. This is how the system works.
Thank you.
All right. It is prime 30. So we are officially going to start. So welcome, District 30, Bonneville County. This is District 30 Town Hall Meeting and we've got Representative Marshall, Representative Hornman, and I'm Senator Cook. And we all represent District 30. And we thought it would be kind of fun to get together, tell you where we're at, what we're working on, and hopefully answer some of your questions. We have one question so far. We're going to hold it. So Julie, don't give up on us. We'll answer those questions, but we kind of wanted to introduce ourselves and then maybe hit the question and then we can.
Sure.
As time. Take a quick introduction would be helpful for the folks who are listening in today.
Good. Yep. So do you want to go first?
Sure. Happy to. I'm Representative Wendy Hornman and live in the Ammon area. I serve on the Joint Finance and Appropriation Committee with Senator Cook and also on the House Commerce Committee and the House Energy Committee. INL is in our district and so that is an issue very important to all three of us. I also do serve on the House Ethics Committee. Was just elected to that last week by my peers. This is my ninth year of service and just a quick update on kind of a minute or two on what I'm focused on right now and is primarily budgets. The first six weeks of the legislative session are budget hearings for every state agency. And we spend usually about three hours every morning listening to those presentations. Most of them, we're socially distanced in the JFAC room. I think it's important to note that no legislator here has contracted COVID. We are socially distanced in, in our committee rooms and so, but we just, um, so we're listening to budget hearings for two more weeks and then we will start setting those budgets. After receiving all the input, we will begin setting those. There has been some question about that, given the, the flow of money into the state when the legislature was not in session and how that works. So the, the Idaho Constitution here, um, section seven, or sorry, Article seven, section 13 and 16, which is the finance and revenue section, says that appropriations shall be made by law. Well, Civics 101 here, the legislature writes the law, the executive branch implements it, and the judiciary interprets it. Very high level. Gary has written a book further on that. But that's the basics. Yes, that's the basics. We all know those. And so that's what the Constitution has entrusted the legislature with doing. Sometimes we have to ask hard questions. I took a hard vote yesterday in committee on, on a bill where I couldn't get my questions answered. And so I voted no because I do think that's what you sent us here to do is ask questions and make sure that the things that go through this sometimes messy process of vetting have been, have been thoroughly vetted and thoroughly examined to make sure that they're in the best interest of the people that we represent and in the state of Idaho. So I'll stop there. Representative Marshall, do you want to introduce yourself next?
Yeah. Thank you. I'm Gary Marshall and serve in the House. I serve on the Education Committee, on the Agricultural Affairs Committee, and on Judiciary Rules and Administration. So those are the three committees and education is particularly important to me. I spend my professional life in education. I do live out in the Osgood area, northwest of Idaho Falls. That's where Ramon and I live. We have seven children and 39 to be grandchildren. And we're, you know, it's, it's been a good thing to be here. I'm in my second term, so this is the third year that we've, that we've been here. Let me just tell you one thing that's kind of occupied a lot of my time over the last year, and that's been our K-12 standards for public school children, the achievement standards that we have in math, English, language arts, and science. So near the, the legislature, we've had the issue come up over and over and over again. There are a lot of people in the state who don't like Common Core. Our math and our English language art standards were based on Common Core. Our science standards are actually based on another national organization called Next Generation Science Standards. And we use those standards virtually verbatim. So the issue has been, how do we, how do we resolve the concerns of some of the people who have not liked Common Core? What does that really mean when you say get rid of Common Core? And so I spent the last year working on this pretty diligently. I was co-chair of an interim committee on standards. I served on some of the rewrite committees that were organized by the State Department of Education to rewrite the standards. We are not trying to get rid of standards. We're trying to make our standards better and we are trying to address the concerns of people who, who have not liked what they called Common Core, which included some of the things that were in our science standards. I may talk a little bit more about that. What I would tell you is we've, we're in the midst of rewriting the standards. Our goal is to get very good standards. We still have a ways to go. And would entertain any questions that some of you might have about that.
All right. I'm Kevin Cook. This is my first session, first year, and I'm serving on the Education Committee. And I just want to say we're lucky to have Representative Marshall on the Education Committee over in the House and does a wonderful job. Education is, is big. I'm passionate about it. Today we had, we, we sent, we voted on a bill in committee to send it to the floor that we voted on, and that was for advanced opportunities. I am excited about that. I ran on the idea that I wanted to give our Idaho kids a greater, it's greater educational opportunities, and I believe this one will, will. Is it perfect? No, probably not, but I think we can work with it and, and get some things, some stuff working around it to help us some sideboards. And so I'm, I'm excited about that one. I'm also serving on JFAC and all of Eastern Idaho should be very excited that Representative Hornman is on that. She is very respected and well-known for her knowledge of the budget.
You need to give just a quick explanation to folks.
Oh, quick fact is.
One of you.
It is the joint.
It's a very important committee.
Yes.
It's great that our district has two people serving on that committee. It's, it's a great blessing for us to have both Representative Hornman and Senator Cook serving on that.
In fact, we also have Senator Lant, who is District 33, which is the donut hole of Idaho Falls. And so we have good representative on that. And so JFAC, what it stands for is Joint Financial Appropriations Committee. And so that, they set the budget. There, as, as Representative Hornman said, right now we're, we're listening to all the agencies that come in and present their budget and, and we get to ask all kinds of questions and see where they're at with that. So that's been really interesting. I guess maybe one thing I have learned as a freshman also is I always thought, you know, things go so slow in the government to make, get a bill through, and they do. But I've found that that's good. It's a good thing. Today, like I said, we, we debated on, not really debated, but we had people come in and testify and we asked questions and over and over. And I'll admit, I wavered one way and back and forth as I heard different things with this, uh, advanced opportunities. But it, but it is slow, but it's a good reason for it to be slow, to be able to understand everything. So anyway, that's, that's who we are.
Yeah. Gary and I have the same experience on the floor today. There was a bill coming up on, related to monuments that both of us thought, hmm, no. What we had seen, the debate we had heard, but we're not on the committee for that bill came through. And so we listened intently to floor debate and were persuaded that this bill, this resolution actually has been, has been proposed as not an infringement on local control, but is indeed a protection of our history, which is something all three of us care deeply about. And so that's why, I think someone had commented on my Facebook page earlier about where I was on certain bills. That's why we don't commit our votes in advance of letting the process work through because sometimes you learn new information either in committee that influences you to vote maybe differently than how you thought for reading the bill or on the floor when you listen to the debate that comes up. And so I personally learned that lesson from Senator Bart Davis. If you want to know how I'm going to vote, watch, watch the vote on the floor because we do like to make sure the bill gets through all the way through the process before we make those decisions.
And there is plenty of pressure to know how you vote before you get to the floor. The lobbyists, fellow representatives and senators are out there campaigning for their bill and watch and you just listen and wait. And so that's good. All right. We ready for our first question?
Let's do it.
Okay. This one is from Julie Adams. And she said, what are your thoughts on the medical budget, Medicaid budget since Medicaid expansion? So I'll, I'll just add one thing and then I'll let you do it because you'll know better on you. But I was shocked, my understanding, and you correct me if I'm wrong, but this was to this year, the Medicaid, our Medicaid budget surpassed education budget. That is huge. And how are we going to deal with that down the road? That's what we got to find out, but, but that is huge.
Yeah. And I, I was concerned about that all along. I didn't support the Medicaid expansion. I thought there were other ways to get to that that would not infringe on, on education funding. If you go to my campaign Facebook page, Wendy Hornman for Idaho, and go back to November of 2019, you'll see my editorial on that where I predicted this would happen. It's happened in every other state. Our actuary that predicted what our costs would be were off, astronomically off. It's, it's more than double what was predicted it would, it would cost. And so K-12 education, if you look at a 20-year history of appropriations, you'll see that K-12 appropriations stick right around the 48 to 50% range in all of those 20 years. Where the trade-off happens with Medicaid, as Medicaid goes up, higher education funding has gone down, I think from a high of 12 to 15% to maybe down to 7% now. And that's, the pie is only so big. And even though our pie is growing rapidly right now, Medicaid is growing faster. And so we do need to find a way to make sure those costs don't outrun our ability to pay them in the long run. But it's, it's a great question. It's been, it will be a tough one in the budgets that come before us because we didn't fully fund expansion last year. We went, we left an eight and a half million dollar hole that counties were expected to contribute to. And so now this year, we've not only got to find that eight and a half million dollars, we've got to find tens of millions more to help pay for this. And that will be a big part of the work that Senator Cook and I are doing in the Finance and Appropriations Committee.
And so I believe the other part of that as well is the federal government matches it, is it 7030?
Medicaid expansion is 9010.
9010. And I believe there were hints that Medicaid, the Federals might be backing off of that. And so if they start backing off of that, then we're, we've got a bigger problem on our hands. So great question, Julie. It's a problem and that's why we have Representative Hornman.
It will take all of us to fix that problem.
But it is, it is a big one. Let's see. Do we have a, another question there?
It looks like a comment from Jeff Townsend. Hi Jeff. It's a great point. He says the county budgets are also suffering. It's a great point, and that's why the bill to have counties contribute to Medicaid expansion went nowhere last year. So what we did do is take $6 million out of the CAT Fund, which is a, um, short for catastrophic healthcare funding. Counties do pick up a portion of that. And the whole plan was that as Medicaid expanded, the, the need for the CAT Fund would go down. Well, that didn't happen. So we took $6 million out of their budget last year to help pay for Medicaid expansion and we ran a supplemental in the Joint Finance and Appropriation Committee already to put it back because of that, that rebalancing hasn't happened yet. It may over time, but so far it hasn't. So thanks. It's a great point. That, that does bring up, since we don't have another question, um, there's a bill I've been working on that talks about greater transparency in, in local governments. Public schools are already required to upload all their fiscal transaction data to their local websites, but there was a concern from some districts at home that, about the security of that information. So drafted a bill last year to have that be posted at the state controller's website, which has a much higher level of cybersecurity protection. And then I found out later that somebody else was working on one to do all the taxing districts. And so that's a bill that will actually have a hearing tomorrow morning in REVEN Tax. I'll be presenting down there with Representative Addis. And so regardless of, you know, um, how much and what for, we'll at least have a uniform accounting codes that will give us transparency across all the local governments for, for this spending. And I think that's a good thing, not only for taxpayers, but also for the taxing districts to, for us to be able to see apples-to-apples comparisons about this.
You know, there's an issue, I guess we can move on to another thing quickly. A lot of you have sent us emails regarding groceries and sales tax. And, you know, we haven't seen specific legislation on that issue yet. I think all of us are generally committed to repealing the tax. Senator Cook, I don't even speak for you on that. I think, I know. So we're committed to repealing the tax on groceries and, you know, we, we promise all of you that we're going to pay careful attention to this. We don't even know whether a bill will surface out of committee on that issue this year. Senator Horn, Representative Hornman, have you seen any bill?
I know that Representative Nate has a bill. I haven't seen it yet, but so far it has not been given a hearing in, in REVEN Tax.
So, so it's, it's likely we won't even see a bill. I, I would share with you that even though we're generally committed to repealing, there are some details that, that, that do have to be worked out. For instance, do, do you tax the, the chicken nuggets at Wendy's, but you don't tax them at Albertson's? There, there are lots of questions about what constitutes groceries and what constitutes things that might still need to be taxed. So those are, those are issues that we'll pay careful attention to. We're generally committed to repealing the sales tax, although it looks like we might not even have that opportunity this year. And we can't force that out of a committee unless one of the other committees agrees to have a hearing on it and print a bill and get the bill to the floor.
Again, guys, if you have some questions, feel free to, to write them up, send them to us. You can, you can do that. We, we do have one question.
Also another, they want you to expand on the bill that Representative Marshall just talked about and how it would have an impact on revenue.
The grocery taxes. So I'll let, I'll let these two talk about that. Obviously, um, it would hurt the bottom line of our, our general fund not to tax groceries, but I don't know the amounts.
Well, and, and so you see the bill, you can't analyze the amount. And so to be determined, but we also do fund a grocery tax credit in the state of Idaho. And so if you offset, um, the, the reduction in general fund revenue with the cost of administering the credit, I mean, depending on how the bill's structured, you can get to a net zero potentially, but I'm not sure if that's exactly where Representative Nate is headed or not. But it, it, it depends on the value of the credit. And when we tried to do this last year, or a couple of years ago, I think, but it was $130 million. Frankly, I'm not sure of the numbers currently, but we will get that and report back on our Facebook pages.
So, so you can see one of the issues that we face here, if, if a bill were to come before us, most of the time that bill has a trade-off. If you repeal the grocery tax, then we also end up repealing the grocery tax credit that you use when you file your income tax returns at the end of the year. And usually those are proposed as, as you get the one, but you're going to have to give up the other. So you can see why it's, it's a little bit more of a difficult issue for us and we have to get into the weeds, know the details before, before we decide that we can completely support something. But we are generally in favor of repealing the grocery tax, just may not have an opportunity to do that issue.
You know, the great wise man taught me while I was running, he says, says Kevin, you do not vote on concepts. You vote on the words of the bill. So my concept, we're on board with that, but until you actually see the bill, that's when we actually start voting and saying, yeah, I'm for, I'm not for that bill, but I am for, for repealing the sales tax. And so you got to wait for that and everything's not just black and white. We got another question here. Let's see. Jeff Townsend asks, are there any concerns on federal overreach that could impact Idaho? So we've discussed that and that's kind of a hot topic right now. Can you, can you mind your sense real quick? All right. So, so the overreach of the, the federal government, but even, even if you look, I guess when I read that, I was thinking the Idaho state government, the federal government, there's always overreach. The sovereignty of Idaho, it seems like it's, it's less and less that we're relying more and more on, on the federal government. There's a lot of concerns about COVID-19 and all these funds that are coming into the state. And people are saying, well, if you accept that, you've accepted the strings, therefore you're, uh, the federal government is overreached. And, and yes, that is true. The federal government does not give us any money without some kind of string attached to it. And, and so you got to decide, okay, is it worth it? Do we want it? As a whole, Idaho state takes in way more money than we give to the federal government. And I believe that's because there is so much federal land, the Federals own so much land in Idaho. I don't know the exact figure of that, but it's.
53%. I actually have a resolution to help us get, it's called Payment in lieu of Taxes or PIL Funds. And the federal government made some commitments decades ago to reimburse us for certain levels, at certain levels, and that just hasn't been happening. So there's some new technology available that helps us analyze the value of those lands that would help us put pressure on the federal government to reimburse us. Frankly, that's one of the problems with property taxes in the state of Idaho. When you only have 30% of your lands to help you generate revenue for schools and roads and, and all the other things that, that our taxes pay for, it puts a disproportionate burden compared to states in the East who have little to no federal land. They're able to utilize all their federal lands to help generate revenue. We would not be, the resolution doesn't contemplate selling those lands or anything like that, but it does contemplate assessing the value and then pressing the federal government to reimburse us for the promises that were made on the, on the value of those lands back in the seventies.
So two-thirds, two-thirds of the state is owned by the federal government?
So many of you send us emails constantly asking us to do all we can to stop the overreach of the federal government. Quite frankly, our, our ability to do that is quite limited. Quite frankly, our, our ability to do that is quite limited. We understand the problem, but it's not totally within our reach to undo what the federal government does. There's no question that in our federal system, the balance is, well, everything is totally out of balance. And what we used to contemplate as the proper role of the state, much of that has slowly gone to the federal government. We don't like it. We, we certainly would undo it if we could, but we're generally not in a position to do much about that. We're very cautious. We want to make sure that federal monies that come in are used the way that they're supposed to be used, but we just have to kind of work within the deck of cards that's dealt with us to some degree. I know some of you won't like hearing that, but it's just the way it is.
And here's an example of it. And Julie, it looks like it goes to your follow-up question about how much of the Medicaid costs are related to the pandemic and how much would be otherwise. We actually had that conversation in the Finance and Appropriations Committee. There weren't great answers. In fact, there were no answers to that, because one of the strings of the federal government of giving us an increased match rate on regular Medicaid. So regular Medicaid is about 70/30, but during the pandemic, they expanded it to 76%. So the state only has to come up with 24%. So we experienced some savings there that will help offset other expenses. But the strings that came with it were, you can't remove people from the Medicaid rolls, even if they're ineligible, as long as the national emergency is in force. And when asked that question, was it 32,000? I asked that question in committee, and I think I was told 32,000, with some of them in expanded Medicaid, partly in traditional Medicaid, that are on the Medicaid rolls that likely aren't eligible to be there. But if we want the higher match rate from the federal government, then we have to leave those people on the rolls until the emergency is ended. And then we're free to do the analysis and see truly if they should or shouldn't be there and move them into other areas or, or the exchange or getting private insurance. But that's an example of some of those federal strings that come, that, you know, we're now carrying, I believe it was over 30,000 people on our Medicaid rolls that probably aren't eligible.
Got some more questions?
Yes, we do. We have Mayor Calenti on the line from Idaho. So you're mayor.
Hey, Mayor.
We know this question.
So he's, well, he's not asking a question. He's, he's asking for your support. He says there will be a broadband bill, and he would ask for your support. Do we know much about that?
I was just looking at an agenda today, and there's a print hearing for a broadband bill. But here's a little tidbit. Anytime you have a bill drafted, it's, it's described as proprietary, meaning the legislator who has it drafted owns that bill draft. They are under no obligation to show it to anyone before a print hearing, except the chairman of the committee, so they can get a hearing to get it introduced. That's what a print hearing is, by the way. Old-fashioned term of when they actually had to print it. It's a bill introduction hearing where the committee says, yes, we should think about passing this bill, or no, we shouldn't. And then later, the full hearing shows on the bill. So I'll have to go, I can't even remember what committee that was in front of, but I did see that there is a broadband bill on the agenda for tomorrow somewhere in this building. It might be the Energy, Environment, and Technology Committee, because I do serve on that committee. But until tomorrow, I won't know what that bill looks like until after we agree to print it or not print it.
You, you bring up a good point that, that I didn't understand until I got here. How powerful it is for the chairman of committees, and those chairmen of those committees, you have priority depending on who is the majority versus the minority caucus. And, and so when you vote, you know, you really need to think about who you're voting for and, and what's behind them, because it makes a huge difference back here of who the majority, majority is and who that chairman is. That chairman decides whether they're going to get a hearing or not. He could stick it in his desk and leave it there for years.
Mayor Calenti and all of you, we try to understand, I mean, we clearly understand the significance of broadband and the importance of it to individuals, to families, to schools, to businesses. And we, we will try to do everything we can to protect Ammon's right to build out their, their infrastructure and their broadband service. The idea of, of a city or a county building the structure or the backbone service and then letting other service providers provide the, the immediate service for the internet or whatever, we, you know, we try to understand all those issues and, and we're going to pay careful attention and try to protect the right of Ammon to do what they've been doing in that area, and the city of Idaho Falls as well.
Right, we, we were trying to keep this to a half an hour, and we're getting close to that. But Julie, Julie's got another question for us. Is there a bill that will reduce county budgets? I understand the Sheriff's Department is concerned about the county budgets and having to make cuts. And I'll, I'll give you my two cents and then let one of you follow on. There's not a, a bill per se that cuts county budget. There are some bills that I know of anyway, where they're trying to deal with property taxes. And in dealing with property taxes, the, it affects what comes into the county. And we, we've all, I think the whole state of Idaho says, we've got to do something about property taxes. And so there's some different bills that are coming through. I, I know there's one or two that's coming from our side. I, I'm assuming you've got something on your side as well. So, in fact, I believe I'm meeting with associative counties sometime this week to talk about property tax and to see what their bill bounty is, but anyway.
Neither of us are on Rev and Tax, and so if there is a bill coming on our side, we don't know about that.
I'll just mention to you, the other day, a bill came up in the Judiciary Committee on the House side. Some questions about the funding of the POST Academy, where our, our police officers are trained. And that particular proposal was to take some of the money from counties and cities to fund POST. I opposed that, because I said, no. No, let's not take any money from the cities and the counties to fund POST. We'll need to find a different way to do that. There was, the, the problem is that POST, the, the Police Training Academy is funded through dedicated funds, if I understand that right. And those dedicated funds aren't providing sufficient money to train the number of new police officers, Idaho State Police Officers, Sheriff's deputies that, that are needed in the state. So the, the idea was to go grab some money from the cities and counties, and I, for one, said, no, let's not do that. So the, the proposal was pulled back. I'm not sure what it'll come, come forward as.
Okay. Where are we at? We're at 602.
We're at time.
We're at time. Thank you for your questions. We had a whole bunch of, of things we wanted to talk to about, but your questions are more important. What your issues are more important.
Can I just say one more thing? We've, we've heard from a lot of you about the whole issue of the emergency and ending the emergency or not ending it. What we can tell you is, you know, we, we have to be careful about ending the emergency in the middle of this pandemic. We don't want to do anything that would cause harm to the rollout of the vaccine. We know that many of you want to get a vaccine. None of us want people to be forced to take a vaccine. But there's a difference between the emergency order and some of those particular, what do we call them?
The stay healthy orders, executive orders.
The executive orders. And there are things coming through the legislature to sort of rein back some of those specific orders about how many people can assemble. But there's no proposal right now to end the emergency, because there's too much question about what that might do to the rollout of the vaccine and other kinds of things. So we hope that all of you understand, it is a big issue over here, and we're kind of working our way through it the best that we can right now.
And it's not just black and white. There's a lot of noise. And we, like, I think that Deputy Marshall, the first, says we're getting hundreds of emails, and we literally are, and we were trying to read them. And we appreciate you getting involved and hope you'll continue to be involved.
And we do hope that some of you understand, when we get 200 emails in a few hours' time, it's virtually impossible for us to respond. We hope that you'll be patient with us in, in that.
We're grateful to connect with you here, though, and hope that you'll join us in the future. And feel free to share your comments with us on our Facebook pages or through our email, because at least we'll see them and do our, do our best to incorporate your perspectives into the deliberations that we go through.
Thank you.
So we will do this again in two weeks, unless something major happens, but plan on us doing this in two weeks. But the best thing to get the word out, if you would, is take this video and share it. Share it on your Facebook, then it will go to your friends, and they will hear about what we're saying, and hopefully they'll get involved in two weeks when we do this again. So get your questions together, and we'll see you in two weeks. Thank you.